Well, good afternoon, everyone. It is March the 19th, 2019, 6:00 PM. We're here at City Hall at 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And the Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I would first like to introduce our honorary City Council member, Baylor Oliver of Oakwood School, Granbury ISD. Baylor Oliver is a fifth-grade student at Oakwood School. She attended Oakwood since kindergarten and is currently the Student Council President. As a school leader, Baylor helped start the Kindness Club Student Organization. She also starred this year as Willy Wonka in the school musical. Her hobbies are playing sports, singing, and dancing, and she is a member of Stonewater Church and volunteers by leading worship for the children's ministry. Baylor is a beautiful girl inside and out, and she is a third-generation Granbury ISD student. Her proud parents are Casey and Lisa Oliver, who are in the crowd with us, and also a whole lot of sisters back there. So all raise your hand out there. If you can see there, there you are. Yeah. So we want to congratulate her for being chosen to serve as the honorary council member with the Granbury City Council tonight. So she's going to be working with us today to set the consent agenda and to do our pledge and that what. So we're going to get started. Thank you for coming. I want to ask Baylor real quick here, what is it that really excites you about being on the Student Council there?
I love to lead and I love to, well, I love to lead people, and I think being on Student Council gives me a good opportunity to show them everything about me and everything that could be good for our school. And I really like working with my other officers. They're really fun to work with, too. It's really fun.
Do you have a lot of students that bring complaints to you?
No, not often.
They don't do it, okay. That's good, okay. Well, that sounds like you do a great job for Oakwood. And I would say that her principal, Don Cody, Don, you hear? Yeah, there's Don. Don Cody is in the crowd, too. I bet he's really proud of Baylor.
Yeah, Baylor, her grandpa was here.
Her grandpa, J.C. Campbell, right here, yeah. He informed me of that today, right?
Great grandfather.
J.C.'s a grandfather for everybody here in City Hall, I'll tell you that, right? But I'd like to call upon Casey Oliver to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by Baylor Oliver. All rise, please.
Let's pray. Father God, we love you, and we thank you for the honor to serve in your kingdom. God, I pray that your word is true, and Lord, you tell us that it is. And when we ask for wisdom, you give generously. So Father, we ask for wisdom as we lead this community. Lord, I pray favor and blessing over the members of the council and the mayor as they guide and lead us. Lord, I pray that our words and thoughts and actions honor you tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas pledge.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the states of Texas, one state under God, one individual.
At this time in the program, we have a proclamation from April 2019 as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. I think we've got some representatives. I've seen Jean Kate come in. And we're also going to be recognizing the 2018-2019 Junior Leadership Granbury High School class. Jean, who you have with?
I'm the chairman of the committee of the election representatives.
Okay, very good, very good. So today, we are going to be doing an official proclamation on the Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Whereas children are the dreams and aspiration of the future and, as such, deserve to grow and develop nutrient environments free from fear and victimization, and whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure each family has the support it needs in raising their children in a safe and nutrient environment, and whereas our society has a responsibility to protect our children and help them thrive in a safe environment, as every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, feel secure, and be free from verbal, sexual, emotional, and physical abuse and neglect. And whereas throughout the community, there are dedicated individuals and organizations such as Mission Granbury, CASA of Hood and Somerville Counties, Pelux River Children's Advocacy Centers, Kids Armor of Hope, Hood County Crimes Against Children Task Force, Hood County Sheriff's Department, and the Granbury Police Department. They all who work daily to encounter the problems of child maltreatment and help parents obtain the assistance they need. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. Now therefore, I, Nian Hewlett, the mayor of the city of Granbury, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2019 as the Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. And in Granbury, and urge all citizens to join in dedicating their energies to cherishing our children by helping them grow and develop free from victimization, so they may mature into successful adults. Furthermore, I urge the community to join Mission Granbury and the CASA of Hood and Somerville Counties by participating in the Paint the Town Blue during that month of April by displaying a blue light or sponsoring a CASA blue flag to raise awareness of child abuse. Each, unfortunately, is a present in our community, given under my hand and the seal of the city of Granbury, Texas on this 19th day of March 2019. I want to thank you ladies for what you do. Thank you very much. At this time, I am going to introduce our junior leadership of Granbury. Some of you folks might have came in earlier when we had some orientations with them. They were up at City Hall and were finding out what all City Hall does with the city manager, myself, and the council. And I told them they would be able to experience a council meeting tonight, so it's a short one, but it's still a good council meeting. So at this time, I'm going to just read a little bit about them. I think Kylie or somebody is going to introduce each one of the students. Okay, all right. The Junior Leadership of Granbury program was designed to create an awareness of our community's resources and needs, enhance leadership skills, and help identify future leaders. The classes offer learning opportunities and challenge students to become actively involved in building a better tomorrow here in Granbury. The students were chosen as a leadership in their school and future leaders in our community. They began this year's program in September and, the one day a month, have visited the city and county leaders, local businesses, school officials, and learned about services offered by local charities. They decorated a Christmas tree on the square, and they volunteered wrapping Christmas presents for the Kids Armor of Hope and shopped for angels for the senior center. The students also attended Hood County Days in Austin, and the program will finish in May with a graduation. So we appreciate your hard work and your dedication, and we look forward to seeing the future impact that you will have on this great city. Leading the students are Kylie Peterson and Charlotte Cookendall and the Granbury High School sponsor, David Winkleman. So if I can get those to come up and introduce these students, future leaders, I'm sorry.
Awesome. We have a great group this year, and just to highlight a little bit about who they are, we have members from the swim team who have gone to state. We have basketball, ag, F1. We've got FCC LA, which is kind of like the home economics back in our day. We also have, oh my gosh, theater. We have one of our girls, Clarissa Layland. She is actually at the National Rifle Shooting Competition right now, and she also qualified for Junior Olympics, drill team captain. All of our kids are pretty dang amazing. They have great personalities, but they are willing to serve. That's what makes them special and above everyone else. So we are very appreciative of your willingness to serve, not only your community, but each other. Tonight, I'm going to, we have 16 out of our 25 kids. Want to call your name, please stand up. Adalita Escalon Hernandez. Amberson Myers.
Bring them up here so we can get a good photo.
Yeah, so come on up after I call your name. Brody Hesseltime. Clarina Layland. Cutter Wilmeth. Edith Espinoza. Emily Kelly. Ethan Hart. Hayden Cox. Kristen Fabbish. Kylie Pickett. Lawson Berry. Michael Quinn. Michael Schmidt. Von Sheekah. You're just going to have one name tonight. And Whitney Carroll.
That's our junior leadership position.
Put you in the chair and you'll get the picture. Sit on the desk.
That's a great program, and I hope we can find something to keep them all here in Granbury working and staying right here and raising their families. Good program. At this time, we're going to move into the consent agenda. We have a couple items on the consent agenda. The first one being to consider approving the City Council meeting minutes of March the 5th, 2019 regular meeting. The second one being, consider extending the development and financial service of consulting agreement with Romell Company LLC for a one-year term. Council, you've had an opportunity to read through these consent agenda items. Has there any changes you'd like to make or any of these items that you'd like to pull off the consent agenda at this time?
Mayor.
Councilman Allen.
Oh, number two, I might necessarily want to pull it off, but how long have we been paying them, $42,000 a year? How many years?
I think we're about in the middle of the second year, maybe the third, early third.
So if this deal that they're working on falls through, we still got to pay them another $42,000, right?
Well, they're working year-round on different projects for us with the housing authority. We do have it in our budget. We budget that through the economic development arm of our department, and they've been working with the housing authority successfully. They've got one project that's gearing up to build over Behind Lowes.
Right.
They were very successful. As you recall, it's a very competitive process to be able to get this tax credit housing, and this is a senior housing project that they're currently working on behind Lowe's. The application that's being submitted right now, it may be in your mail, a copy of it, but I know Bruce Wadley received a copy. I was looking at it a minute ago. But they, they're putting forth an application for this year. As you know, it's very competitive throughout our region. They'll award one project per region, and we may or may not get that project. But the important part is, we're working with the housing authority, trying to help them gain more sustainable housing. The housing stock that they have is aging, and we need to do all we can to help them. It's not our money, the building of these projects. We're paying for the consultant as our equity to help the housing authority.
It's not our money?
Not to build the apartments. It's our money to pay the consultant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Okay. We approved that project about two years, three years ago?
Well, to hire the consultant, they've been working for, of course, probably two years, something like that.
I think we rezoned that property, and we're behind Lowe's for performance.
Yeah. Does that have anything to do with that contract, sir?
Councilman Allen, why don't we go ahead and pull this off at this time and just go ahead and discuss it at the first, on the first deliberation agenda item?
Okay.
Don't mind that, okay?
Thank you.
So we'll, at the crest of Mr. Allen, we'll go ahead and pull that one off the consent agenda. Council, do you have any more discussion on the remaining item on the consent agenda? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda unless the number two with the extending of the development, we'll move that to deliberation agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Wadley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corrigan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you. At this time, we want to recognize Baylor Oliver for helping us out on the council and getting us through the consent agenda. We're going to recognize Baylor with a certificate, a distinction of honorary council member, and this is presented to Oliver, to Baylor Oliver, from Oakwood School Student Council President, on this 19th day of March 2019, in recognition of academic excellence, leadership, and representing the qualities of an excellent council member, signed by Dr. Jeremy Glenn and signed by myself, Nian Hewlett. I'm going to give this. We also want to give her a city pin. If I get the council rise, we'll.
Come on in, guys.
She can't, she can't y'all. We're still moving.
All right, we're going to figure this out. Can you get us?
Yes.
I'm kind of a wide lunged guy.
Well, thank you very much, and if I can get my council member, Rick Mobley, to escort Once again, we want to thank Baylor for helping us out and wish her all the luck in her pursuit for being a student council member and also maybe moving up to higher grounds here someday. So at this time, we'll move into the deliberation agenda. As you know, we're going to move the number two item on the consent agenda to the number one item on the deliberation agenda, that being, consider extending the development and financial service consulting agreement with Romell Company LLC for a one-year term. At this time, I'll open it up for discussion. Councilman Allen, you want to go ahead and continue the discussion?
Yes, Mayor. I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I just didn't know what we were getting for the $42,000 a year. And I know this is either our second or third time to do this. And was there anything other than Behind Lowe's that this happened with?
Well, there were a lot of applications last year. They worked with five different applicants, and only one of them was successful in the whole region, and that's the one that selected Behind Lowe's. So they also coordinate all the efforts for these applications with the Granbury Housing Authority to where they develop a system where if these people sell, the housing authority has the first option on buying that property and utilizing it to extend their facilities. And they also have a say-so on the way they look and the aesthetic appeal to them and that kind of thing. So they are working with them. Some of them may, if they were successful. This company hasn't chosen to hire Granbury Housing Authority to do the administration, but that's in the conversation as well. So we're trying to help create more affordable housing in Granbury, and you know, our median household value is $171,000, so you can see that that's a higher-priced piece of property to be able to live here. So that's what we're doing, and we've been doing it successfully with these folks for a couple of years. It's your call, you know? That's why it's on the agenda. We can say that what they're doing for us is less than the cost of an employee would be doing it.
That's true.
They're working it through the Economic Development Department, because we don't have one of those yet. At some point, we do have it budgeted under consulting fees in the Economic Development line item budget.
Thank you. You bet.
And I think it's good that you asked the questions, because if you don't know, you'll never know if you don't ask, so I appreciate it.
Council, any more discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the extent, or to approve extending the service agreement with Romell Company LLC for the one-year term.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And second by Councilman Allen. Council, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item on the deliberation agenda is to consider approving the strategic planning report drafted by the Strategic Government Resources. Council, you've had an opportunity to look all these over during our workshop. They've put them all together now and laid them out for you. I'm going to let our city manager kind of talk a little bit about them, and then if there's any questions or concerns, and open it up to the council. Chris, if you would, please.
Yes, thank you. You'll remember our strategic plan not more than a month ago even, the planning session that we had. We did receive some comments. As you'll remember, there's some reputational drivers that were discussed, and some of the things we're known for is a great small-town city charm. Granbury as a whole is a charmed community. We wanted to make sure that we're developing strong, positive relationships with the county and the Chamber of Commerce, working together as one. And we're also working hard to ensure that Granbury is a destination attraction for staying overnight and enjoying the different things that we have here, whether it's the lake, or the Opera House, or the square, or family and friends. We want people to spend a night in our hotels, and we're working to do that. We also have great community involvement. You can tell that by the number of people attending our meeting tonight. And also, one of the positive things, good driver, was the council was being forward-thinking and taking ownership. That's kind of been the history of Granbury, that we've been forward-thinking and done things proactively to meet the needs. Suppressing needs of the citizens, we discussed, were traffic issues related to Highway 377, attracting and retaining light industry and manufacturing, utilizing incentives, and bringing community groups together in partnership. And we also discussed the planning and zoning approval process and looking at ways to maybe make that better. We did develop some strategic pillars for the community. Those six that we narrowed it down to were infrastructure, economic development involving the city, county, and chamber, tourism, development of pre-owned city property, excuse me, development of city-owned property, and then number five is utilize Lake Granbury, also utilizing and involving the Brazos River Authority. And number six was public safety. So we identified some mile markers and, you know, for each one of those topics. But say for the infrastructure, let's just talk about that one. I don't want to bore you with the whole report, but there's a format here, you know? There's seven or eight bullets after each one of these infrastructure, economic development, each one of those pillars. But, you know, we're talking about creating more cross-connections parallel to Highway 377, so citizens don't have to get on 377 unless they have to. Many places, you don't have a choice because of the lake, for instance, you're going to have to cross over the bridge. But we see the opportunity to increase some paving projects, to increase some streets and some connectivity that didn't currently exist. Continue to work with the wastewater treatment improvements and the plants, continue Phase Two of the water treatment plant, continue the master plans for, and development for master drainage plan, continue to work on a master park plan, also work with the county to develop additional thoroughfare plans. Another one that we're currently working on is installing a fire sprinkler system on the square for the target date of 2020. And so those are some strategic markers, mile markers for our strategic pillars under infrastructure. Economic development is, you know, ongoing, working with the school, state, local government chamber, and hospital. That was ongoing. Year one, need department or corporation that could create a strategic plan. You know, currently, we do not have an economic development department or an economic development corporation, so they talked about that pretty extensively at that meeting, and that's one of the mile markers, and they're looking to get that done this year, within the first 12 months. We also want to create a steady funding stream for that organization where it's not a political idea every 12, every 12 months whether you want to fund that department or corporation. And create a redevelopment zone for the areas to allow for tax abatements before it sunsets and the loss of sun sets on September. And within three years, we want to look to develop, continue to develop medical, community relationship, mid-range jobs, increase medical-related businesses within three years. Three to five years, we would dream of creating a business incubator, finding missing components of businesses here and helping them start and have a location for that to happen. So that's a pretty big, pretty big chunk for mile marker, or pillar number two. Tourism, you know, you can see all that on your plan, immediate plans, increase tax, occupancy tax, not the rate, but the many times that they use it. Attract events utilizing the conference center better. Evaluate events and groups, strengthen on what we have through retention and service and gratefulness. Attract new events, individual tourism, advertising, marketing, branding. You know, we're already doing a lot of those things. This is a mandate to continue along the path that we're on, basically. Maximize Lake Granbury potential with tourism. We talked about infrastructure, parking, conference center improvements, boat parking, attracting fishing tournaments and hosting those, attracting boat races, boat shows, and other events. Do RFP for hotels for booking opportunities. We've started that through Visit Granbury and that's been very successful. Implement conference center strategic plan. We've been doing that, and the plan was adopted a while back, and we've already implemented that officially. Consistency in tourism, staffing department. I think we're going to be consistent. We've got a great team there, and so these are some easy mile markers that you laid out for us here. Remain competitive. I believe we're doing that, and we will continue to do that. Educate the public on benefits of tourism. I think that's an ongoing process that we could start tonight. Leadership Granbury, there is a huge tourism industry in the state of Texas. It's the second-largest industry in the state, and there's job opportunities out there, too. We're talking about job opportunities, tourism-related activities. So anyway, we also want to develop a contingency plan for when the lake level drops down in the event of a severe drought again, and the plan can be developed over the next two years. Development of city-owned property, I think this is worthy of hitting every bullet. I said I wasn't going to do that, but it just keeps getting better and better, and we got a little time to that, so.
Hey, hey.
In the next one to two years, we want to.
Thought his time.
Multipurpose use of property on the loop, our 40-plus acres out there. We'd like to develop a plan of how we want to use that. We're going to look at the north wastewater plant on that site, water plant Phase Four would be on that site, immediate development of a police facility on that site, five to 10 years, a fire facility probably on that site, parks and trails to be included in the master park plan. We think we could utilize some of the land for parks and recreation out there as well. And then the next two to four years, look at Lambert Branch Park improvements, two to four years, GISD, donated property uses, and four to five years, enhancing hike-and-back trail throughout our community even further. Ongoing concerts in the park and outdoor events. This number five brought a lot of good brainstorming into the strategic plan. Work with the BRA for ongoing improvements, more fishing tournaments, more activities for local to use lake and put it on our webpage. More information provided to the community on lake maintenance. You know, a lot of people don't have a clue that we need to have a cleanup day or something around the shore, you know? There's all kinds of opportunities for public service there. More information, encourage more commercial development on lake property. We're talking about the areas that's undeveloped that have some potential for commercial activity, and then marketing the lake for recreation. We just take it for granted people are going to come to Lake Granbury and have a good time, and y'all decided that we needed to be marketing that. Communicate beach uses and safety, you know? That's very important to us, the safety on our beach. Plan for future possible drought conditions. Create a marked canoe kayak trail on the lake. mark canoe kayak trail on the lake where people will be able to check out there at City Beach and go on a trail and have a destination. Uh, conference center improvement utilizing the lake, we're talking about, uh, expanding the, the deck out the back or increase the boat, the boat parking out the, out on the lakeside, that works with the convention center. Um, events using the lake in the conference center, additional fishing piers for the community, boat races and parades on the water, uh, ski and wakeboard competitions. Well, those are some, some activities that we think we could market and, and cause people to want to do. Um, then the, the sixth pillar was the police facility. Um, 2019 through 21, have it complete, uh, now an ongoing fire department apparatus and future facility out there as well, be planning that on the 567 loop. Uh, update our current agreement with the city and the volunteer fire department and the county, and, um, now an ongoing is address staffing levels in the police department and, uh, and then adjust and increase salaries for the police department, $7,000 street position is what was discussed. So, those are what we talked about at the strategic planning cycle. This last page of your report shows the circle, the cycle of strategic visioning. It starts with community input and then staff input, and the city council envisions it, and the staff plans it, so we're kind of at that point right there. The city council's envisioning it, and you're trying to, I'm trying to get charge from you to, to move forward to plan what you want. Uh, then as we come up with those plans, the city council would affirm those plans, and then the staff would execute those plans, and then the city council would evaluate the outcomes of those projects, and staff makes adjustments to those evaluations. So, that's the life of a strategic plan for our community, and we look for it to be completed in the next three to five years. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you very much. Uh, council, you got any questions or comments on the strategic, uh, plan that we had?
Mayor, I'd like to see us...
Councilman Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to see us, uh, set a date like June the 3rd for the city manager and his staff to present us something to look at. He's saying here to recommend that the council adopt these fellows and act, act regular council meetings, so we've got to get started on it. That'd be about 60 days.
Okay. I guess I'm not following.
Well, we're going to need, we, we've got a list here of things to do, right?
Well, it's, yeah, it's a wish list that's, that's out there, three and five and four, there's several, you know, some of them's got several years in between.
We seen this last year, something similar to it.
Right.
And I'm just saying, we should have a, a goal, and our city manager should make us a goal, what he thinks we should accomplish this year and next year, and we can look at it every three months, and then see where we're at. Am I wrong, Mr. Allen?
No, no. On, on June 17th, we'll do that.
Do what?
June 17th, on that date for our budget workshop, we'll do that.
And, and these are, these are things that roll into our budget, Councilman Allen, that we will be able to discuss, because that's the advantage, you might say, of strategic planning and having that workshop like that where we can roll these things into the budget, because we know these are things that all the council has come together and, and agreed that these are things that we want to see for future growth, and, and some of them are short-term, I mean, some of them are sooner than others, you know, and stuff, so that's what we'll be doing, right?
I might just add that the, um, um, the strategic plan that we adopted last year has been completed in its entirety, and, uh, we, we came up with new things on this one. We did carry the, the transportation on 377 forward, but we came up with the idea of creating these backroads and put that actually into the plan, and so, uh, we're working on some of these items already, Councilmember Allen. We're good.
And what, and what we'd like to do tonight is to go ahead and, you know, we're really not voting that we're going to complete all these, but we're actually just adopting the said stra, uh, strategic pillars that's been identified so that we can go forward with them in our budget review, so. Council, any, any more questions concerned on this? Cam, it sounded like there for a while Chris was trying to give your job away to the junior leadership there, their tourism, so, there. Watch him.
That's all I heard.
Yeah, that's all I heard out there. But it was a great workshop, I, I, you know, I wished, I kind of wished we'd had a little more, uh, uh, the community participation, but I know it's during the day and a lot of people working and stuff, but you know, it's, it's great to see the council come together and work through these things and come together with these pillars that we set up there and stuff, so, uh, look forward to, to, to working on this. So, with that said, I will entertain a motion to adopt the said strategy, strategic pillars.
So moved.
I've got that motion by Councilman Reiner.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Wadley. Council, any more discussion on this? None, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Those are approved. Our next item, council, is to consider adopting a member to the Ethics Commission to fill a vacant seat. As you know, uh, we had a member, Jim Marshall, has resigned from his seat on the Ethics Commission. Therefore, a sixth member is needed to complete the pool of candidates. This is true in, in section 1.11065 of the city code specific, uh, that specifically qualifications for the candidates, and we have those qualifications there. Can, uh, councilman, we have, uh, three applicants, John Kortner, Darla Lurvin, and Curtis Tomlinson. So, uh, what I'd like to do, council, is there any recommendations of those three candidates that would like to be?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Allen, uh, Wadley?
What?
Yeah, you too.
I would like to nominate, uh, Darla Lubin.
Okay, we have a nomination for Darla Lubin.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Wadley.
I'd like to nominate Matt Tomlinson.
Matt Tomlinson.
Good choice.
Council, any more nominations? It said none, we will have a show of hands for these two. All in favor for Darla Lurvin?
Lubin.
Lubin?
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh, you got a problem.
Phil. And all in favor of Matt Tomlinson?
We were just watching.
Now, this is not a case where we can have a, uh, no-go.
So, by default, John Kortner wins.
Yeah. Well, that's great. That's great that we have that, a tie like that, because as looking over the applications, it was, uh, really good applications and, and, uh, all of them are highly qualified to, to serve there, and, and we really respect the people that are wanting to serve there. Uh, attorney, give me some advice here.
Someone needs to make a motion to reconsider their nomination to see if we can come together on a vote.
I'd like to make a motion that we reconsider Darla Lubin.
There we go.
So, there's a motion.
We have a motion?
To reconsider.
To reconsider. Once again, and we'll go ahead and load it.
Do we have a second?
Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second by Councilman Corrigan. Well, that's going to be interesting. So, with a show of hands, all in favor of Darla? With a show of hands? For Darla? Now we have four.
Boo.
Matt Thompson's two.
He caved in there, Ken.
So, Darla will be our new, uh, representative for, uh, the Ethics Commission. I think Darla's in the crowd tonight, aren't you, Darla? There she is. Congratulations. Thank you, council.
I hope we never have to put you to work.
Well, we, we did, didn't we?
Yeah. We should, uh, reconsider.
Reconsider.
Motion reconsidered, it's back and forth now. We'll nominate a point.
Okay.
And then get a second put out.
Okay. So, with, uh, so with that said, we've, uh, made the motion for, to reconsider Darla Lurvin, Lubin?
Lubin.
Lubin?
You'll get it about your fourth.
Right, I got it now. So, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to appoint Darla as the commission. And I have that motion by, uh, Councilman Reiner.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Wadley. Any more discussion, council? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. Once again, Darla, you are the new Ethics Commission person there, so congratulations. At this time, I told you it was going to be a short one, council, and it's a, it's a short one. This time, the council has now declared that the city council and all members are present in a convening to open session, that all the members are here. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in these following sections. Concentration with attorney pending contemplation litigations, section 551072, deliberation regarding real property, section 551074, personnel matters or city manager annual review, and section 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We will now go into closed session. I will allow the council to go ahead and shake the hands of our junior leadership out there, if you would. We were now reconvened into open session. There was no action taken in executive session. Council, do you have any more comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Wadley.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, renew the city manager contract with a 6% raise on the base and one additional week of vacation. It'll be a three-year contract and a 4% raise in years two and three.
And second, then?
I got the motion by Councilman Wadley and a second by Councilman Wadley. Council, any more discussion on this item? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. Council, any more discussion? If no further discussion, the council meeting is now adjourned.